All right, good morning and welcome to the January twenty-second special meeting of the Delaware County Council. I call this meeting to order from here on. The auditor will be running our meeting.
We'll start with the pledge. Brad, would you like to lead us?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the roll call. Uh, Mr. Bookout.
Present.
Mr. Flanagan.
Present.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Present.
Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
First was the agenda posted.
Yes.
Can I get a motion for agenda?
Don't move.
Second. Ms. Flanagan.
Before we vote, I'd like to suggest that we remove the council meeting minutes for December seventeenth. Handle those till our next meeting.
The emotion.
Second.
Tom. So Matt and Dan. Dan. Okay, Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Bookout.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Dan. Piper.
Yes.
To the agenda as a minute. Second. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
At this point, we're open to nominations for the positions president of the council.
Mr. Auditor, I would like to nominate Mr. Eugene Whitehead as president. President.
Second.
Are we doing one or?
The only nomination that's open at the moment is for president.
For president.
In my motion to nominate Mr. Eugene Whitehead as president.
Eugene, would you be willing to share a few words on your, your board and want to be president?
Sure, do you want to wait for the nomination to close before we do that? Do we have other nominations for president?
I have a nomination. But I'm happy to hear that first.
Um, what's your direct question?
Well, I would just say, would you be willing to share why you want to be in the current?
Sure, I mean, I feel like, uh, as president of the council, everybody that sits up here needs to be fully behind the president. And with discussions inside this building and outside this building, I feel like the leadership that we currently have does not have a hundred percent support those that sit up here and those that sit out in the audience. Therefore, I'd like to put my name in the hat. Do we have another nomination?
Uh, yes, I would oddly, strangely, like to nominate myself for president role counsel. Um, and I'll explain why. I've, uh, I ran for office three years ago and at that time, two things were for sure, that I'd outworked my opponent to get elected and tried to bring outside experience to county government and use that experience to drive improvements for, for Delaware County. I feel like over the past two years that's done. I've had the pleasure of, of being asked to serve as president pro temp by President Piper. Uh, I think we've worked well together, even despite some of our differences, and I appreciate her support over the last two years. I think I put the work in to be, uh, at, at a minimum, you know, nominated or, or in that position. Um, that in and of itself, you know, having put the work in is not necessarily worth, worth a hill of beans, but I do think it, it should afford me a, a seat at the table and, and a, and an opportunity to be voted upon. Um, I don't miss meetings. I, I volunteer for, I think, the most committees on here. I take responsibility, uh, for and seriously the responsibility given to me here. Um, I've worked hard over the last couple of years to try to drive better communication between department heads, elected officials, council. Um, I'm available, uh, responsive to everyone, obviously trying to provide the best advice and guidance I can based on my experience. Together with President Piper, uh, I put in countless hours to implement our job classification system and provide ways in which salary increases could be had and leveled, uh, this year. And while this year's budget, I, I admit it was a painful process, I, I plan to make, I have planned to hope to contribute to making that budget process more efficient and, and useful, uh, moving forward. So, um, I ask fair but hard questions. I want to hold people, I strive to hold people accountable. Um, I'm an open book, transparent and blatantly honest, maybe to a fault at times. Um, but I would like to continue that progress I've made in those areas, uh, working more collaboratively with commissioners, uh, the public, and increasing the transparency, uh, and improvement that we've made in those areas. So that's why I'm, I'm making this strange, uh, self-nomination to, for myself. And with that said, though, regardless of how the chips fall, I am ready, able and willing to continue that work with whoever's sitting in either seat, uh, moving forward, giving that same level of effort that I've done to date. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll move that we close nominations.
Second. I'll read off your names and you can, uh, cash your votes then. Just off of Mr. Flanagan.
Mr. Whitehead.
Mr. Hughes.
Eugene Whitehead.
Mr. Mokel.
Dan.
Mr. Bookout.
Whitehead.
Mr. Wyatt.
Eugene Whitehead.
Mr. Dan. Ms. Piper. Five to two. At this point, Eugene receives five votes and Dan receives two. Same number two. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Ed.
We'll go right into nominations for president pro temp.
Mr. President, reflecting the intentions of my original motion, I'd like to nominate Dan vice president.
Do we have any other nominations?
I'll move to close nominations.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes, uh, for Mr. Dan.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Ready? With the adjustment of the agenda, we'll move on to transfers and appropriations.
Starting out of county general. Ninety-three twenty, community corrections grant. One oh two, one oh one, home detention supervisor, negative six hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. One oh five, one oh one, HD case manager, get a five thousand eight hundred dollars and eighty-two cents. One ten, one ten, HD case manager, negative nine hundred seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. One eleven, one oh one, jail diversion case manager, negative seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. One twelve, one oh one, surveillance supervisor, negative a hundred and fifty-four dollars and two cents. One seventy-two per, positive seven thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for the transfer here. Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, and the number at the bottom does not equal zero. I'm hoping that in your motion, we can make it read zero.
That's all been my motion.
Thank you. Is that a friendly Dan?
Yes.
All right, do we have any questions? Do you have any comments?
Good morning, Jane Miranda, Community Corrections. This is leftover grant money that was in payroll lines, and when we had gaps in staff in those lines, we just need to move it over to our post line, uh, so that our grant.
All right, no further questions, roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Wyatt. Excuse me. Bookout.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Apologize for that, Mr. Bookout.
All right.
Thank you, Jane.
I also have an appropriation that I need to withdraw. I didn't know if one is to that hour, just wait. We no longer need it.
The pledge of council, want to read it now since she's withdrawing it?
Sure. Need to read. It's on the last page, it's the ninety-three twenty, community corrections grant. For eighty-eight, or eight thousand dollars.
And then simply just remove it if they're not requesting it, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to appropriation.
In county general, one fifty-three commissioner, one seventy-one FICA, fourteen thousand four hundred seventy-one. One seventy-two per, twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-six, for a total of three thousand six hundred and fifty. Move to.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Sarah, do you want to explain?
Uh, this was just announced, given to me by the auditor's office for, was it the longevity? I think it was the longevity. So, I think there's a third one, like that.
Other questions? Do you pay, just FICA per for other departments?
Yes.
There's no further questions, roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
One twenty-four communications, one seventy-one FICA, one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. One seventy-two per, two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight. One eighty-three longevity experience, two, twenty-four thousand. Three ninety-three conferences and training, two thousand three hundred ninety-eight. Three ninety-one dues and subscription, a hundred and fifty-two, for a total of thirty-one thousand twenty.
Approve.
Second.
And a motion by Brad and a second by Dan. Question.
The longevity is per the plan that we. Health, conference, training and dues.
That was, those were charges that were put on the credit card just the day before it got cut off, I didn't get. So, one of the things we were told if we couldn't encumber the money that spent in twenty-four to do an appropriation request, that money was there, it's not going to be paid back for the first year.
So you're earning some money back to?
I don't have an exact amount, but it's between a hundred and two hundred thousand.
We have a cover. Any further questions? Roll call. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
All right.
One fifty-two EMA, one thirty-six educational incentive pay, uh, one thousand two hundred, for a total of one thousand. Move to approve.
You skipped over.
No.
Wait, go ahead, right ahead. Right ahead, Jessica.
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Thank you. Motion by Jessica, second by Brad, and we're, quick.
This is, just so you guys are aware, this is educational incentive pay for my office manager Heidi. We, uh, would have put it into the budget time, but we were unaware if it was, if she fell into the classification of, there was some confusion on, does it have to be job related or just education incentive? And with some checking with the county attorney and HR, it was deemed that, yes, she was, um, eligible for this incentive pay. So that's why we're coming now, for the year for it.
Which is the same as the nine-one-one incentive pay?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Falling under the nine-one-one incentive pay, education pay that.
I would say pay.
Yeah, I believe so.
No, like, but there's, is nine-one-one the only one that has this?
You have incentive pay, right? In education? Yes.
The public?
Yeah.
Thank you. Further questions? Roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
One twenty-nine here. One twenty-nine, one fifty, high tech crime, nine thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. One eighty-three longevity experience, fifty-three thousand.
This is what, this is where I wanted to, I was trying to set that up.
Two one two, one fifty-two eighty-eight. Two one fifty-two eighty-eight.
Say that one more. Fifty-two, one fifty-two eighty-eight. Everybody clear on the new number? And a motion. Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Now, Bill, do you have questions?
Where did that, where did the, what was advertised? We advertised for county judicial appropriations, county general, two hundred and thirty-six thousand thirty. That includes the nine thousand one two eight eight or. Advertising was two hundred and thirty. If we didn't advertise it, we can't approach.
Ben's doing the math real quick, Bill. I don't do math.
The number though?
Two thirty, two thirty.
I think it's.
It was?
But I.
That's fine, I.
And while everybody's punching in numbers on the calculator.
I can take and hold this and we can move it to your regular meeting if we need to, just to ensure that if it wasn't.
I'll see where the numbers come out, Nancy, and then we'll decide on that.
Okay, all right, so with it, I'm getting two sixty-two, one eighty-five. Thank you. Oh, now he had the. Thank you. Two seventy-two, one eighty.
Over. What did you deduct the eighty-eight to eight?
That's out of other. Yeah, right, that's the same thing there first time.
So Nancy's willing to withdraw the nine thousand one fifty-two eighty-eight?
I can put it on for your regular meeting if that, if that works.
If you take the nine one fifty-two off your number, Jessica, does that?
When I take the nine fifty-two off, I get two sixty-three, oh three four.
That's our number. But I get three, and that's with advertised, correct, Bill?
Three four.
So then that was transposed, because in the advertising it was two three six. If our advertised number transposed. I guess I'm asking Ben or Ed. What steps we do to? The advertised number is the advertised per, um, we need to, we need to figure out on, in my opinion, on, you need to change what you appropriate, lower what you're willing to appropriate. Fall under. You know. I mean, you can pass everything except for the longevity for the sheriff and the high crimes. It's all under that. To answer your question, no, you don't have to appropriate anything today, but I think there are, there are budgetary needs for things to be appropriated today with separation. But just because you advertise appropriations, if you don't appropriate, don't appropriate. The, the issue today is the amount that was advertised is different from the amount that's posed to bring the, to pose. Let me ask the question. Can we adjust this one here to the twenty-seven thousand dollar difference between the two hundred and sixty-three and the two thirty-six? And then bring it up at our next meeting like Jim's asking and still be able to cover everything between now and then?
Sure, you can reduce that amount.
Nancy, does that work okay for you? I know that means you have to come back.
So I'm gonna reapply for the, um, nine thousand one fifty-two eighty-eight. And are you telling me you're not going to appropriate any of the fifty-three thousand or you're just going to do part of it and I'll?
Part. You want to reduce it to twenty-six thousand, be twenty-seven thousand less, and I think that gets us to our two thirty-six advertised.
Okay, so then I will put in paperwork later today for the remaining twenty-seven.
We double check with everybody on the number. Do, do you reduce it down to two thirty-six oh thirty?
Okay.
I think there's no other errors on down.
Okay. I'll, I'll go back and type up the new then for the adjustment.
But then I'll move that we approve minus the high tech crime unit of nine thousand one fifty-two eighty-eight and reduce the longevity line to twenty-six thousand?
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Jessica and a second by Bill. Everybody clear on it? Any questions? Do you have any questions?
Um, no, but then we, we deal with this same amount of money somewhere. In the major transfers, you're gonna have to remove that also.
We're just worried about general right now. Because we advertised.
Right, that same amount of money we're dealing with over here in a major transfer on.
Oh, I see.
The next page. So I'm gonna have to remove that one off, because obviously we didn't appropriate. I'll have to retype that with a new date for the next meeting off. Am I correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. So I'll withdraw the major transfer as well, and I'll redo the regular appropriation for your next meeting.
Thank you, Nancy.
Mm-hmm.
As far as I know, any more questions, roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
No. We need to do roll call on the original. One forty-five jail, one eighty-three longevity experience, thirty-eight thousand, for a total of.
Approve.
Second.
By Dan, second by Jessica, any questions? Then roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your name is B.
One thirty-eight court, one eighty-four longevity experience pay prosecutor commission, five thousand, for a total of five.
Approve.
Second.
Motion by Dan. Jessica, second, questions? The, the wording here that says longevity experience pay prosecutor commission, why does it commission? Master.
That's the line item they told me to put it under. That's how it's listed in the budget.
So it's, or it's.
That's the, that's the line item name they gave it.
Were we limited to characters, Ed, when we were making that?
Yeah.
I think that's why it's that.
Yeah.
Just making sure, is, is there a different one or just?
No.
That's not, I was told that they're all the same prosecutor.
Any questions? Roll call. Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan. Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Forty-four.
One twenty-three, forty-four, one eighty-four longevity experience pay prosecutor commissioner, five thousand. One seventy-one FICA, three hundred and eighty-three, one seventy-two per, five hundred and fifty, for a total of five thousand nine hundred.
Approve.
Second.
By Dan, second Jessica, any questions? By Dan, second by Jessica, any questions? Do you not have any, there's no leftover money to cover this FICA PERF? Yeah.
No. And if you don't appropriate it underneath this one, then you don't get that sixty-six percent reimbursement. And the other, uh, FICA PERF is appropriate underneath the commissioners on the, on the court side.
Further questions? Not, roll call. Just Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you Emily. Prosecutor.
One thirty-seven prosecutor, one eighty-four longevity experience pay prosecutor commissioner, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty for a total of eighty-three thousand.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica, any questions? Not, roll call. Just Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan. Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Thank you. Family support division.
Two thirty-seven family support division. One eighty-four longevity experience pay prosecutor commissioner, ten thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Brad, do you have any questions? Alright, done, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you.
Now another statement by one-one.
Twelve point two, twelve wide nine-one-one, five thirty-six equipment, sixty-two thousand for a total of sixty-two.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica, do you have questions? Brad, you wanna tell us what equipment?
So one of the downfalls that we found during the tornado was our channel paths on our radios. More to work with our radio guy, this is to add two channel paths onto the tower. Um, so that we increase the paths that people can talk on so that we don't get as many. Something that's been in the works since after the tornado, so finally have a price and we're ready to move forward with it.
Brad, any other questions?
I'm paid. They'll do it the next few months, I mean, it's bad weather right now to tower, but have the money appropriated, we can pay.
Other questions? Say none, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Thank you Brad. Alright, given the community corrections, removed it, PERF grant.
Eighty-one oh nine PERF grant, one oh one O P O grant, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, twelve dollars for a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica, any questions? Any comments? What the grant for?
Um, this is for Operation Pullovers, self-driving grant.
Is this reimbursement to officers?
Correct. He submits monthly.
So is this a credit or debit? Debit.
Yes, and the money then is reimbursed monthly back. Uh, I cash with all the paperwork, which I know you guys don't see that, but. The federal government awards a lot amount of money and that is what this letter is. And we appropriate then at the beginning of the year, the full amount of the grant. And then it's reimbursed back in.
And so later on you'll come back with a credit of that amount, is that correct?
No, every month, I, I will deposit money every month to cover this.
You're taking the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar allocation. You're gonna spend it down throughout the course of the year by paying out your officers or whoever's.
Correct. And then we just, we in turn, put the money back into the account to cover this.
Understands. Have to be zeroed out over here?
It's supposed to be.
Is it?
No, actually there's usually extra funds that we don't spend.
Is my question, so goes back to then on a monthly basis, do we see this line item showing up at the credit?
Every month in, in your deposits, yes, you will.
We don't, we don't see it because it shows up salary.
Yeah, this is a grant, so it, it can show that it's negative. It says wonky, it's like this every year that she comes and we'll do this, so we can go in the red on those grants when you know, when she has a letter saying the money's coming.
Correct. And it only comes monthly and yes, it does come out of the salary, so the money that is spent is quote unquote, I guess you would say overtime. Money, it's how they get it and then we just refund the account back with all that money.
Yeah, we think so normally.
No.
But is your question answered? Any further questions? Say none, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you.
S D O fund.
Still me, dang it, I was thinking that was on the next one, next meeting.
Eleven ninety-two S D O fund, two eleven office supplies, six thousand dollars, three twenty-four communication, six thousand dollars, total of.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica. Explain this to please.
Uh, this is monies that we get on an annual basis from the fees collected from offenders to run the program. So these two accounts pay for the person in charge of the program's cell phone. That's what part of that is, any computers, any office supplies, especially things he has to get for that program. So that's what this money is used for, if it's not, then it just goes back into the S D O account maintained and, and I reappropriate every year.
Any other questions? Say none, roll call. Just Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
And now I'm really done.
Prosecutor lit.
Eleven seventy, one thirty-seven prosecutor lit, one eighty-four longevity experience pay prosecutor commissioner, thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty. One ninety-eight, one oh one part-time, eleven thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. One seventy-one FICA, two thousand, five hundred and forty-four, one seventy-two PERF, three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four for a total of fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-four and eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Jessica. I'll go ahead and explain.
Lisa Car, Lisa Car from the prosecutor's office. Um, the part-time is that we had, we've been without a receptionist for several months on medical leave. And in November I had asked for a transfer from that salary line to part-time to hire a part-time person to. Um, I found a part-time person, but they did not start until December thirteenth, which is in the twenty twenty-five budget. So we used none of the money that was transferred to us in November, so I'm asking to transfer that to the, for this year or appropriate it into twenty twenty-five. The FICA and the PERF, because it's lit, those go along with the longevity.
Any more questions?
So you returned some money out of twenty twenty-four back, back to lit?
Yes, yes, that, that whole amount was put back in lit.
Any further questions? Say none, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Uh, motion to approve financial transfers into amend salary ordinance with like reduction.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Dan, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Do you have the fact-filling report? Nothing there? Motion to, say we received it?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, this time I'm gonna give it to Jessica again.
Okay.
Roll call, Ms. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Dan. Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Ordnance and resolutions before us on the appointment thing, committee report. The council has a list of liaisons that we're going to work with for the next year, what boards? Jessica, did you read this last year?
I did not, but we can. Did I? I may have.
Alright, I'll read through it then. Brad Bookout, Commissioners, Housing Authority and Transportation, Dan Flanagan, Highway Department, Yorktown and Mount Pleasant Library Board and the Regional Wastewater. Mr. Hughes, Security Committee and Board of Judges, Mr. Dan, Finance Committee, Job Classification Compensation Committee, Commissioners. The EMS EMA Joint Communications Board, IT Committee, Mr. Mokel, Commissioners, Board of Health and the Fair Board. Piper, the Finance Committee, Job Classification Compensation Committee and Animal Control. Myself, Finance Committee, Job Classification Compensation Committee and Delaware County Redevelopment. Now you know who to contact if you need the communication between yourself and the council. A little clarity on mine, just I, I think that we had a conversation about the Joint Communications Board, that we do, I do believe that. Um, I spread, if you have any, I sent you an email, but if you have bylaws or whatever outlines who's supposed to be on that. As actual members versus a liaison, that'd be, if you have any. Okay. Okay. Got it, did you hear all those?
Yep. Mr. President, I also have, um, the one board that always gets brought up, but it's not an appointment board, it's, um, your representation on our EMAC board. Emergency Management Advisory Council, it's supposed to be you or your designee. So.
I had Matt serving in that capacity.
Correct. So we'll leave that up to you, but, and we'll send out, just let me know, that way we can get, make sure the emails go out to the correct person.
Matt has volunteered to continue serving on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, cause that would be different for the liaison situation. Could have had the. Okay. Alrighty, we'll move on to the Housing Authority Board appoint. My understanding, we were only received one name?
Correct, I sent out this information, uh, to the council and the individual who saw this position is Tim Pierce. He's the CEO of Crime Trust Federal Credit Union, so if you guys recall, that's before I thought I saw for us here. Horsepowers came to our last meeting and had recommended that they'd like to see someone in banking or construction join their board, that was someplace they were lacking, so I was thrilled when we had someone with banking, banking background who applied.
Motion to approve him.
Second.
Motion by Brad, I think I heard a second by Bill.
Yes.
Thank you. Other comments?
Danny, very pleased, I think, yeah.
Good, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Alrighty, I have nothing on the agenda for old business. New business, elected officials and department heads. Public comment, Eric, would you check this page, please? Or then email that. Uh, there's a question coming in, Christopher Pilbury. Uh, will Brad Bookout continue having his contract with the county while sitting as? Do you like me to address that, Mr. President? Comments for council next, so. Very good, I think Mr. Pilbury's aware of the contract just calling out Delaware County contract, uh. September first, twenty twenty-four. Where. Critic. Said and done throughout the campaign. Can use that, uh, in that role and that capacity. Says, help me have been correct. That Tim, choose to call me or email me. Other comments from council?
Let's see. Am I? Uh, I'd like to, have to do it here, but the R is offers to help me with the. Statement on county general because it's showing a balance at the end of only four million, three hundred and thousand. I think. There's called budget, they're anticipating that we would begin the year with a balance general of neighborhood of seven million. Some point it's good to clarify the numbers exactly where we are on, maybe that. That would be down to four million dollars. Um, I assume we'll get. And the final thing. Place summer meeting was uniform. Also the, and well, which really affects here, I think, that I filled out both.
Alrighty, is it enough to? Please right ahead. Is it enough to just file with clerk?
Pardon?
Is it enough to just file it with the clerk's office? Or does it go to you?
It definitely goes with the clerk.
To be clear. Thank you.
I'll be dropping mine off for the meeting too. Um, the only thing I have is I wanna make sure that when we get Brad's email set up, that we add him to the distribution list because we do receive emails. Um, that email address that we share typically at the beginning of the meeting, our county council, the I S P at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. For the distribution list, that anyone who emails that, it goes to all of us, so we'll wanna make sure that you're added to that distribution list.
I wanted to, you asked the question about the, the operating balance, um, in general. And my understanding was that this, what's on this appropriation isn't often accurate, um, but. And I haven't seen, we haven't, obviously they've been closing the books, so this is a preemptive question as Bill's already asked, sending. But at the end of November, the ending balance I believe was about eight million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, so. Um, from the statement of cash report that, that we've been receiving, I've only gotten it through the end of November, but just for what's worth, that's where that number was a month. And I'm assuming we'll get that sent out at some point, um, the December one. Thank you.
The folks that get one of the longevity plans, they all get paid out in December, so there is a large sum that does go out that.
And, and I do, um.
In summer as well.
Yeah.
Right.
The pension is not always the same as other.
Right. Um, cause I do wanna do a little bit of a cash flow analysis, like we talked about the first year and, and trying to keep track of that based on the report that they've been sending, so. Fill that in as, as we get the. Any other comments? I'd like to take a quick moment to thank Jessica for her leadership, thank Matt for his continued leadership, thank council for their faith in me. Also like to reach out to those communities that have been hit hard with the recent incident in Vegas, Orleans. We all need to take a moment and just reflect on that, that, that serious situation. On that, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jessica, roll call. Megan.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Mokel.
Yes.
Bookout.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Our next meeting is January twenty eighth, nine AM right here.